I think you're ready, aren't you? City manager, are you ready? Okay. I'd like to welcome everybody. First, I'd call our meeting door. I'd like to welcome everybody to the May 12th, 2015 meeting of the McMinnville City Council. As a reminder for those in attendance, that our meetings are both being videoed for broadcast delay on McMinnville Community Media on both Comcast and Frontier and also they're being streamed live by KLYC. So for the convenience and respect of others, I ask that if you have any cell phones on, that you please put them in silent mode and during our meeting refrain from either sending or receiving texts and if you find the need to do so, that you go out into the lobby to do so. So that being said, what I'll do is I'll ask Councilor Rudin to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Allen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor. This is the time on our agenda that we ask if there's any citizens or anybody in the council or in the chambers who would like to speak to the council on anything that is not on our agenda tonight. It's your chance to come forward and do so. There are some things, as it's shown on the agenda, that we have to refrain from discussing. And one is a topic that's already on the agenda. Again, we ask you that you wait for that agenda item. A matter that the city is in litigation in, a quasi judicial land use matter such as a zone change or one of those things, a conditional use permit, or a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future date. And if you're not sure it's scheduled for a public hearing at some future date, we will help you on that. And due to some of the testimony, that I will reserve the right to limit the time you're allowed to do that. So do we have anybody in the audience who would like to speak to the council or ask any questions to council or anything that is not on our agenda tonight? Hearing none, I'll ask a second time. Is there anybody who'd like to speak to the council for anything that is not on our agenda tonight? Okay, hearing none, we will move on. Councilors, there are the minutes of the March 24th and April 24th, 2015 dinner and regular meetings in your packet. And now's the time that we will consider those minutes. So has everybody had a chance to review the minutes of the March 24th and April 14th, 2015 dinner and regular meetings? And if so, are there any changes, additions, or corrections? Kelly? Down here to my right, is there? Hearing none, then, I will entertain a motion that we accept all the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Hill, second by Councilor Minkie. All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that the minutes of the March 24th and April 14th, 2015 dinner and regular meetings have been approved. The next thing on our agenda, we do have a proclamation tonight. Normally, I don't do this, but I am going to ask Mike Bisset to come forward and stand up front with me. This is your time to shine, Mike. As you may or may not know, that May 17th, 2015, May 17th through the 23rd, 2015 is the National Public Works Week. So for the National Public Works Week, we do have a proclamation. And I'll go ahead and read this and says, "Whereas the year 2015 marks the 55th Annual National Public Works Week, and this year's theme is 'Community Begins Here,' and whereas because of public works, we are able to have clean water, safe streets, parks and buildings, well-functioning sanitary sewers, and reliable power, all of which are vital importance to the health, safety, and economic well-being of our citizens and businesses. And whereas the employees of McMinnville Water and Light and the employees of the city's engineering, building, public works, and wastewater departments serve the public every day with quiet dedication to provide essential services in support of everyday quality of life, and whereas it is in the public interest of the citizens, civic leaders, and children of McMinnville to gain knowledge of and understand the importance of public works and public works programs and their daily lives, now therefore I, Richard L. Rick Olson, Mayor of the City of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim the week of May 17th through the 23rd, 2015 as National Public Works Week in the City of McMinnville. And I call upon the citizens, business leaders, and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing and maintaining our public works infrastructure and to recognize the contributions that public works officials make every day to our health and welfare. And witness thereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of McMinnville to be affixed this 12th day of May, 2015." And Mike, I'd like to thank you for all the job you've ever done for the city. And I know for the next couple of years, you have a real busy projects in front of you. And I'm glad to be here because you guys are a mainstay of the city. So wouldn't you just go to see Water and Light, can you assist? If so, I'm going to give it to Mike if you can deliver it because I won't have me until after this. So I'll give you that. Thank you very much. Thank you. You know, I think another comment on that is I think a lot of our citizens really don't realize all the work that goes in by our city staff and our City Water and Light staff to maintain our public infrastructure that we have. If you look, I mean, from a City Water and Light standpoint, if you can look at the number in the last year, last two years, the number of power outages we've had in McMinnville, they're very few and far between. You look at the number of overflowed catch basins we have, very seldom compared to other cities do we have a lot of overflowed catch basins. And if you look at the big addition that's being made out on Riverside Drive to our wastewater reclamation facility, I think that shows a lot of pride in what our staff does for the citizens of McMinnville. And we should all, as citizens, be proud of our public works, both from the city's side and the City Water and Lights side. So again, Mike, you thank you and pass it on to all of your staff for me. The next thing we do have is we'll move into new business and we have a report from the Housing Authority of Yamhill County and Elsie Huey, the Executive Director. And this will be regarding the countywide efforts on homelessness and a few other things. So welcome. I see we have a future leader in training.
Thank you. And it's actually Elise Huey. I'm the Housing Authority Executive Director and this is my daughter, Jocelyn Huey. And she's going to help me with my presentation tonight. So hopefully, we can get her close enough so you can hear her. So Martha asked me to be here tonight. I understand you're getting educated on housing and homelessness. And I am more than happy to be here and very pleased to be here to talk a little bit about poverty and housing, specifically in McMinnville. And what I'm going to talk about is why does it matter, which I know that you've heard that already. We'll try to go over that pretty quickly. The need, which I know you're aware of, Councilor Drabkin did a, I went back and watched Channel 11 for your last city council meeting, and she did a very nice wrap-up of the Housing Forum. I know that Lee Means from YCAP also did some on the need at the last meeting. I like to put things in presentations. That way, you can see it because when you go back and try to write things down quickly, you know, sometimes the numbers get convoluted. So this will give you some information and I can send this to you afterward if you're interested as well. And then we'll talk a little bit about some suggested solutions that I think you might want to consider. So the first thing we're going to start out with, we're going to get the nerves over right away. And Jocelyn has been volunteering with me at different places probably for five years. And she started helping me with the Community Connect Event, which you have a flyer on. That's this Friday. And then it was her idea, she wanted to go volunteer like at the pet shelter or something. But there's a problem because you can't volunteer under a certain age at pet shelters or different places. And so we were actually at a volunteer fair. And I was there with another table and we were sitting next to Howie Harkema at the soup kitchen. And we're looking around, we're walking around, and a lot of places she couldn't volunteer and she was kind of getting discouraged. And I turned around and I said to Howie, I said, "Could we volunteer at the soup kitchen?" And he said, "Absolutely." And so we started volunteering there and we do it on a regular basis. She loves that. We volunteered also at the McMinnville Free Clinic. And this past weekend was our first time volunteering at Saturday morning breakfast. And it's just something that we both like to do together. And I think when you have a mother that does what I do for a living, you can either completely tune it out or you can tune in and be aware of the issues. And Jocelyn is one of those that definitely listens and has a heart for what I do and for the homeless. And so they were having a writing contest at Dunaway and she decided she was going to write a persuasive essay. It was either between her hamster and homelessness. And she said, "You know what? I can always write about twitchy, but I want to write on homelessness." And so she started doing her research and wrote this persuasive essay. And she actually got first place and was able to read this essay to a lot of the sixth graders at Dunaway. And then we also practiced through the presentation one time with some Lynnfield students. So this is just her third time doing this. And she's going to go ahead and read her paper. And then if you have any questions, you can ask her after that.
Jocelyn, can we get you, first of all, congratulations on winning. Great job. Can we get you to move the mic just a little bit closer so we can make sure everybody behind you can hear the essay, the wonderful essay?
Homelessness, what it really is. To begin, nothing is what it seems. When you see someone on the corner asking for food, you might think it's just one person. Hate to break it to you, but there are about 1,200 homeless people just in Yamhill County based on last year's point-in-time homeless count. Our homeless community members have a hard time getting food and clothing, not to mention medical care and housing. Close your eyes. Now, when you think of a homeless person, what image comes up? Is it a man covered in rags and pushing his shopping cart? And maybe he has some stubble. Now, here's the truth. Most of the homeless wear normal clothes like you and me. Some homeless even have phones and cars. Most of the homeless are kids, just like me and my friends. Almost half of the homeless population came in 2014 during the point-in-time homeless count in Yamhill County were under the age of 18. No one ever chooses to be homeless. Sometimes people can't pay medical bills or bills in general. Sometimes someone loses his job and can't pay rent. Sometimes when kids get out of the foster care system, they don't have a home. Then they end up living under a bridge or in a park, or if they're lucky, they get to sleep in a car. When you hear programs to put people in housing, there's only a limited amount of housing. There are more homeless people than there are available units. Also, when you think that they can just stay with their friends at rent, it is not a permanent solution and some don't even have $10. Often homeless people cannot pay for food, so they end up at the soup kitchen if they want a healthy and hot meal. Because the soup kitchen is serving more and more people every year, they always need more food and money. Due to this, there's a real possibility that the soup kitchen may not be able to feed everyone that needs fed at some point. The more people that we can put into affordable homes, the less people may have to go to the soup kitchen, which is a good thing in the long run. If you're homeless and don't have a job, it makes it hard to get a job. This is because most homeless people do not have a safe place to put their stuff, so they carry all their stuff around. It's hard enough to get a job with a home, but imagine trying to get a job while being homeless with all the hurdles in front of you. With a job, they can buy food and hopefully pay rent. It's also hard to do stuff when you're homeless and have to carry all of your personal belongings around with you everywhere. In today's eyes, a person who is carrying around the belongings in a large backpack may come across as a terrorist or someone to be afraid of. I volunteer a lot at the soup kitchen and everyone there, many of whom are homeless, always treat me very nicely and politely. A YCAP where Tad Beckwith was nice enough to give me a tour. I learned that even though they do a great job of getting food out in the community, families and individuals still get hungry because YCAP cannot provide every meal every day. YCAP helps get food out to replenish food pantries and the soup kitchen. However, with the growing need, there's always more food needed. I'm happy, however, that there are these resources that help the homeless. In conclusion, even though there are many resources to help the homeless, there are many needs that we have not been able to assist with due to people turning the other way or due to lack of resources. When more people open their eyes to the problem, it may actually start to reduce stereotypes and hopefully, we can all work together to help the homeless problem disappear for good.
Well, that was very, very good. I think you hit the bullet points throughout the whole essay and I can understand why you won first place, Jocelyn. That was very, very well.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for her else? I'll let her go sit back there instead of in the spotlight.
She can either stay up there or she can go sit, whatever makes her feel comfortable.
Okay, she's fine staying up here, so we'll just continue. So as we talk about our homeless population, I think it's important to keep in mind that community health requires a community-wide commitment. And what I mean by that is, in my eyes, we look at our community as our family and you always want to take care of your most vulnerable because you're only as strong as your weakest part of your family. And we all have family members that aren't as strong as others and we work to take care of them. So people that have heard me talk before, I'm big on this housing continuum. In our Ending Homelessness Plan for the county, we address everything from homelessness to homeownership because to me, it's a continuum where if you don't have enough homeless shelters or you don't have enough transitional housing or more permanent supportive housing or the market rate housing or the homeownership, if any one of those is lacking, it has a downhill effect. And sooner or later, everyone's pushed out of the bottom, the more vulnerable are pushed out of the bottom towards homelessness. And that's the problem that we're facing today. If you were able to read the Oregonian in March, Anna Griffin did a really nice job with a series of articles on homelessness. And she just had one in this last Sunday issue as well. But in this article, series of articles that she did, she talked about how 600,000 people are homeless on the streets right now and 7 million more are one missed paycheck away or a health crisis away from sleeping on the streets. I mean, this could be our mothers or brothers or sisters, you know, our grandparents. And it's just, everybody thinks that's not going to be me. But if you go talk to our homeless population, you'll find out that's what they thought. The thing I liked a lot about her set of articles was that she did real-life stories. And the problems in Portland aren't any different than the problems in McMinnville. They're just on a bigger scale. And so there was one lady, she was in her 50s, you know, never thought she'd be homeless. 50 years old, she gets fired or laid off or whatever it was. She got laid off, sorry. Her unemployment ran out. She couldn't find a job before her unemployment ran out. 50 years old, trying to find a new job, couldn't do it. She was homeless. I mean, it was just that simple. Oh, now what? You know, sleeps in her car, finally gets into one of the homeless programs in Portland, which there are huge waiting lists for. And then finally is now back up on her feet. But those kind of stories are, you know, what you hear out on the street. You know, an individual, that's a long-haul truck driver in our community, 18 years, gets diabetes, gets laid off because they're worried about his seizures, goes to find other employment, previous work in restaurants, things like that. But what do they look for on your employment applications? Last 10 years? What has he been doing for his last 10 years? Long-haul truck driver. You know, even McDonald's and the fast food restaurants won't look at him. So it's just those kind of situations that could happen anytime that are creating some of our situation. Jocelyn touched on the numbers locally. You know, the number that's really hard to swallow is the percentage that are children. 45% of last year's point-in-time account were children. The harder the people that you see on the street, those are considered, for the most part, chronically homeless. And there's about 20% of our total count that are in that category. So I can speak a little bit to the Housing Authority, which is obviously where I'm most intelligent in this conversation. And we had our waiting list, our largest program, our Section 8 waiting list, closed for three and a half years because we could not go through it enough to, there were people that had been waiting four years for housing on our waiting list. So we ended up closing it. We closed it for three and a half years before we went through all the names on the list. So that was really hard because people were coming in. And how do you not give them even a hope? No, our waiting list is just closed. And we refer people to other resources, but in this community, for everything that goes on here, there's not always a resource available. We were fortunate, we went through all the names on the waiting list. We reopened it at the end of August and already by, you know, about six months later, we had over 1,300 families, and that's families, not individuals, on our waiting list. For our programs, people must be very low income and I'll talk a little bit about that more in a second here. So affordable housing, you hear different definitions, but affordable housing really means that you pay 30% of your income towards your housing, your rent costs, and your utilities. So you can see this statistic about the 12 million renter and homeowner households that now pay more than 50% of their annual income for housing. What that means is if they're paying that high of a percentage towards those things, other things are going to slip: food, clothing, transportation, medical care. In the U.S., this is another one that I, it's hard to swallow. A family with one full-time worker earning the minimum wage cannot afford the local fair market rent for a two-bedroom apartment anywhere in the U.S., anywhere. In Yamhill County, a household must include 1.9 minimum wage earners working 40 hours per week year-round in order to make the two-bedroom fair market rent affordable or one minimum wage earner working 72 hours a week to afford a two-bedroom apartment. I don't know how many people you know that work 72 hours a week. I mean, but you know, that's a tough road to hoe. So employment opportunities are something we need to keep in mind as we have this conversation as well. And then, so the Housing Authority actually serves lower than the bracket I just talked about. We assisted households that averaged 12,954, which is about 623 an hour. And the reason for that is because 30% of our households on average are disabled, 14% are elderly. And then 62% of our households that we assist through our programs have children involved. And so not only are we required to serve households under 50% of median income, but 75% of all households that we serve have to be below 30% of median income. So what does that look like? So I went and we don't deal in our agency very often with the federal poverty guidelines, but I put them on there just so you could see. Most of the Health and Human Services programs will deal with that first set, that federal poverty guidelines. What we deal with are these two columns over here. And like I was saying, everyone that comes through the Section 8 program to be eligible has to be under this chart. And then 75% of who we serve are actually in this ballpark right there. So you can see, we're having to assist, and I mean, we are able to assist the lowest of the low-income people. And people don't have to have income to be served by our programs. That's a notion that people think, "I have to have some income." No, you don't. Zero, you know, 30% of zero, zero will help you out. So persons below the poverty level. Again, another little statistic that is hard for me to swallow in McMinnville because U.S., 14.5%, this is from the range of 2009 to 2013, which is where I could find statistics. Oregon, 16%. Yamhill County is just right above the U.S. but less than Oregon. But McMinnville is higher than all of the above. So it's definitely something we need to work on. And then children in poverty. In 2013, more than one in five Oregon children lived in poverty. 182,000 children in the state of Oregon that meet that definition. So types of poverty, Lee talked about, last time she came and talked to you, about kind of three different sections. And you could talk to 10 different experts in this area and they probably all have different groupings of poverty. But the data I was able to find and kind of what I believe is that there's two types of poverty. There's the long-term poverty, so generational, working poor, and those who are disabled elderly or in fixed incomes. Or the temporary or situational. And even with our chronic homeless, I think that if you find the right fit and the right services, that they can get out of that situation. So I believe at some point, everybody can be housed. And then I'm just going to go through these quickly because I know you've heard this before, but impacts of housing instability, the health outcomes. Again, this is something that I found fascinating is that for individuals and families trapped in a cycle of crisis and housing instability, housing can entirely dictate their health outcomes. So it's proven, even with young children, that if young children go through stressors when they're young, they're more than likely to have diabetes when they're older, they're more than likely to be obese when they're older, you know, they're more likely to have depression and these other things just because of what they might not have been aware of that they were suffering when they were younger. Education, you know, we all know that if you don't have a stable housing environment, it's really hard to get a solid education due to the disruption. Employment, Jocelyn touched on this. You know, how do you go find employment when you can't get a shower or you have to carry your belongings everywhere with you? It's really difficult. And then the societal impact, so the fear that folks have of the homeless, the lack of understanding, the stereotypes. And it works both ways. Public health risks are increased, more children that are homeless enter the Department of Human Services system, family stability erodes, and there's a potential for poor workforce development. So just to touch briefly on the Ending Homelessness Plan for the county, this was something that I was actually at a conference in Salem. And I'm sitting in a room and there's a panel of people up front. And this guy from USIC, which is the United States Inter Council on Homelessness, is holding up a chart of Oregon and he's showing where they have ending homelessness plans. And I look at it and he's like, you know, Yamhill has one in the works. This is in 2006. And I'm like, really? So after, you know, we're done with the workshop, I go up and I said to him, "I'm sorry, but are you sure Yamhill County has something in the works?" And they said, "Well, yeah, your county commissioners passed a resolution in 2006 that you're going to do an ending homelessness plan." Okay. And so I come back and Doug Bartlett at the time was the executive director for YCAP. And I'm like, "Hey, Doug, you know, have you, do you know about this ending homelessness plan and are we moving forward?" And, you know, surely the Housing Authority and YCAP would know if we're doing something. And no. And so we asked this guy from USIC to come and talk to us. And he came and explained that sure enough, the county commissioners and, you know, the Director of Health and Human Services at the time were planning this and there was a, you know, this resolution passed. And then nothing. And so a year later, we started, we got, you know, Kathy George and we're like, "Let's get this going" and got this steering committee going. And then in 2008, we actually were able to draft a tenure plan. We did an ending homelessness kickoff event. Some of you may have been there. Went out and met with the city members. And since then, we've been able, every year, so we were just doing shelter counts at the time. So we've done countywide homeless counts ever since to get a better idea of what exactly we're dealing with. And then we're doing the Community Connect Event. We've done that every year since and it's just grown and grown and grown. And so you have the flyer and I would really encourage you, that's this Friday from 10 to 2 at Shemekada. We're trying a new venue this year. And so we're trying, oops, sorry, that should be Friday. Thank you, Jocelyn. May 15th, May 14th is her birthday. May fourteenth is her birthday. [laughter] May fifteenth. This will be on Friday, May fifteenth, from ten to two at Schumekada. And I just encourage you to come stop by and see what it's all about. I was putting the list of service providers together today. That'll be at the event. And we have over forty service providers that'll be at the event. And then we have medical, we have dental, we have vision screenings, we have haircuts, we have bike repair, we have pet care, we have a mobile veterinary service that'll be there. So it's just a wonderful event that brings all the resources and services together in one place at one time. And so just definitely would invite you to come stop by and take a look at what that is. And maybe next year, we can consider having it at the community center if maybe the city wouldn't charge us for that. So just something to think about as we work on next year's event. So moving from needs to solutions, as you know, there's a lot of agencies that work really hard in this community to provide assistance, but the need keeps growing and growing faster than we can keep up with that need. And so YCAP does have some short-term tenant-based assistance vouchers. They have some funds at certain times available for security deposits and to prevent evictions. They do have three homeless shelters that need a lot of work. Then they have some weatherization funds for homes, but those are really targeted to just weatherization issues. And then they also have some non-housing programs. The Gospel Rescue Mission, as you know, has, right now, the capacity to have seventeen beds, but they're unable to expand due to conditional use permit. And then Henderson House, they're also able to house quite a number yearly, and that's a shorter-term solution until they can get them into another option. So you can see the numbers there for Henderson House. Housing Authority, like I said, our biggest programs is Section 8 vouchers. And what we've done is to kind of help a little bit with the problem. In the past, probably six years, we started working with a variety of local agencies, and we provide what are called fast-track vouchers. And so there, we give a local preference. So if another agency will provide the supportive services, so the case management, once somebody gets a voucher, we will put them at the top of the list and move them through a little bit quicker. And so right now, we have vouchers with Corrections, YCAP, Health and Human Services, Veteran Services. And then we have what are considered family unification vouchers with the Department of Human Services, and that's to keep families whole or to reunite families. And then we just established a couple vouchers for folks that are losing their homes through foreclosure, too. In addition to that program, we have five hundred eighty-four of our own rental units, but you can see right now, a hundred eighty-six families currently on the waiting list for these units, so always waiting list for those programs. We believe in working people towards self-sufficiency, whatever that may be for that particular family, and we have a program that works on that. And then we're big on education, so we have Ready to Rent classes, which help teach people the basics of being a good renter, financial literacy, home-buying classes. We help people with loss mitigation, foreclosure counseling. We're working with the city right now on a new grant program that'll help folks in manufactured homes that are in parks to repair their homes. So that's an exciting one for us. We haven't been able to do a grant program like that in the past. So always working to see what else we can do to assist. And then some of the wonderful things that have happened since the tenure plan started are the Community Winner Inclimate Shelter Help, which I'm sure you're all aware of, completely faith-based. We have a wonderful faith-based group here locally. The churches open up their doors to people on inclement weather nights and are able to shelter people that otherwise would be out on the streets. And then our feeding ministries also do a very good job locally. You can see the increase of almost ten thousand meals from two thousand thirteen to two thousand fourteen. And like Jocelyn said, I mean, they work hard to keep up with that need, and someday, if it continues to increase like that, they may not be able to keep up with that need. So a hundred eighty-three meals, on average, being served per day here in McMinnville. Wonderful efforts. And then the Free Clinic, again, pretty much a faith-based effort with local physicians. So that opened on March second, two thousand thirteen, and has had a grand total of nine hundred forty-seven patient visits. So just been open, you know, about two years. They're doing a wonderful job there. Another one, if you've never seen them in operation, walk through sometime at First Baptist, first and third Saturdays of the month. They do a really amazing job. And then we have, I won't touch much on these because these are more of our homeownership programs for low-income folks, but we do have some. They're just, can't do big quantities, you know, quickly, but it is an option for folks that are ready to move to that next step. So I did a little research on City of McMinnville's comp plan, and the comp plan actually has some very nice language in it that allows you all to do what needs to be done to address some of these issues. And so I just thought I would point a couple of those out. Fifty-eight point zero zero, she'll provide opportunities for development of a variety of housing types and densities. Fifty-nine point zero zero, opportunities for multifamily and mobile home development. She'll be providing in McMinnville to encourage lower-cost renter and owner-occupied housing. Sixty-four point zero zero, the City of McMinnville shall work in cooperation with other governmental agencies, and in that dot-dot-dot, the Housing Authority specifically mentioned, which I thought was kind of funny, and private groups to determine housing needs, provide better housing opportunities, improve housing conditions for low and moderate-income families. Sixty-nine point oh oh, she'll explore the utilization of innovative land-use regulatory ordinances, which seek to integrate the functions of housing, commercial, and industrial developments into a compatible framework within the city. And then seventy point oh oh, the City of McMinnville shall continue to update zoning and subdivision ordinances to include innovative land-development techniques and incentives that provide for a variety of housing types, densities, and price ranges that will adequately meet the present and future needs of the community. And I only bring this up because some of the things that I'm going to suggest in a little tiny bit will tie directly to your current comp plan. So as we talk about some examples, I was able to research and find some examples that I thought might be possibilities here in the City of McMinnville. You know, maybe not on as big a scale as are being done in other places, but just something for consideration. So there's good examples of tent cities up in the Seattle-King County area, and they're work with the city. They make sure that they work with the local police. You know, they have strict code of conduct, security workers, litter patrols, and things like that. You can see on the bottom left, they get everything up off the ground on... They do the structures so that it can get everything off the ground, so people stay dry. They have these tent areas and then common areas where they have the facilities available. So good examples that are things being done up in those areas. So this Opportunity Village in Eugene, you've probably heard about that. The thing I like about this is it's... You can see from the right side, it's a really nice structure. It has thirty tiny homes, eighty-square-feet units, so very inexpensive, you know, well-thought-out. The shared communal kitchen, bathroom, showers, and gathering spaces. This whole community was built with a hundred thousand in private donations, leveraged with donated material and volunteer labor. So that might be something that we can all look at. Emerald Village will be phase two of that, and that would be fifteen units, a little bit bigger. They'd have their own bathrooms and kitchens, and still, again, like the shared community spaces, but they... The rent would be two fifty, so this would be kind of a stepping stone from Opportunity Village to maybe Section 8 program or something like that. The big thing with all these programs is it gives people a place. They can lock their door, they can stay dry and warm, they can keep their belongings safe. Dignity Village in Portland, third-acre site, sixty residents. Again, the shared concept, just like Opportunity Village, the self-governance concept, just like Opportunity Village. They contract with the city for that site. And then somebody, when we were doing the housing forum, brought up Conestoga Huts. What about Conestoga Huts, like they're doing in Lane County? So, okay, I'll do a little research on that. The thing about Conestoga Huts is that the structure, the way that they structure it, it actually allows the units to stay a little bit warmer and a little bit tighter, but they're cheaper to build. And so these ones are about sixty-square-foot minimum size, and they can be built between two hundred and fifty to five hundred dollars. A lot of the ones that they build in Lane County have been used from recycled materials, and so they build them, they put them on church grounds. So what they did in Eugene, Lane County, was to say, "Churches, we're going to expand our zoning ordinances so you can have housed vehicles, homeless vehicles, campers and things on your properties." But then they went a step further and said, "And you can house these tiny houses on church grounds." And so it's no longer, you know, something that the churches were getting in trouble for, but they were encouraged. If you want to do that, that's great. The churches, in these cases, would provide the power to the units and the garbage. And again, just another example, you know, something we might want to take a look at. And then Central City Concerns will back up to the Portland area. They do some community engagement programs that are wonderful. They have a lot of experience with what we're dealing with, so that may be somebody that we want to talk with as well as we move forward. And their thing is all about the supportive housing. So house somebody, bring in the supportive services around them, and that works really well with your chronically mentally ill, and your chronically homeless, and people with barriers. And in Portland, you can see, that ended up being more cost-effective. So I did a little research, you know, Utah keeps coming up, and Utah, they gave everyone that was chronically homeless, you know, they said they housed everyone that was homeless. No, it was the chronically homeless. And so they came up with this same concept. They said, "If we house somebody and put the supportive services around them, it's going to be cheaper than them using the emergency rooms and using the police and using those kind of facilities." And that's what they did in Utah, and that's what's working down there. Same thing in Portland here. So City of Newburgh, you know, I hate to point it out because I like City of McMinnville much better, but City of Newburgh does have an Affordable Housing Action Plan. They don't always follow it, but they do have one, and they worked over a period of time to put that in place, so they do have some background in developing an Affordable Housing Action Plan. We did our last development in Newburgh, and, you know, again, it wasn't the easiest process, but they're trying in that way. So I think the important concepts I'd like to highlight, I'm just about done, so just wrapping up. The long-term goal is to build a stronger community with more productive, self-sufficient, and contributing members. Is important for intervention to avoid homelessness when possible. Another fiscally responsible thing, it's a lot cheaper to keep people in place than to rehouse them. So if you can pay that one month's rent and keep them housed, than to get them out on the street and try to find them a new place to live, a lot more cost-effective. If not possible to avoid homelessness, rapid rehousing is important, especially with young kids, to keep that family stable. We need to make sure we include the longer-term permanent housing solutions, including the supportive services, as I talked about, especially for your chronically homeless, for those in need of wraparound services. And we're going to need all of us working together if we really want to solve this problem. And the top three reasons to get involved, you can see the pieces of the puzzle throughout the presentation. So our Ending Homelessness Plan is all about the pieces of the puzzle and putting those puzzle pieces together. So the top three reasons to get involved, fiscally responsible, cheaper to house people than to have them on the street, it's a community safety issue. I mean, that's been part of the concern, right, with the homeless population around here, is, you know, the police are called, and, you know, there's issues with that, and it's not always our chronically homeless, it's our young adults downtown and different stuff, but it's a community safety issue. If you get them housed, they're less likely to reoffend, it's proven. And then it's just about doing the right thing. So again, it's that feeling that this is our community, this is our family. So possible solutions, and I believe you were given a copy of Affordable Housing Toolkit. And so that's just, we'll go into detail on some more of these items, and that was something that, as I started to look into it, I'm like, "Hey, some of this has already been done for us. Why not look at that?" But the first thing I think that we can look at is revising the current zoning ordinance is to allow for densities and many homes. And I know, you know, as we do that, we need to be careful because you don't want the unintended consequences, you know, of... We want it to make sure that that's well-thought-out and not just something that is rushed, because it has to be the right time and the right place, right? So these are all affordable housing ideas that are in your toolkit handout, so just some ideas of ways that the city can help. So it's just like reduced off-street amenities, parking, density bonuses, expedited permit processing, more land zoned RF4 so we can get the density in there, partnering with local agencies and obtaining affordable housing grants, waiving, reducing system and development charges, limited tax exemption programs. And, you know, when I say things like that, I know it's all bottom-line, like those kind of things are bottom-line for the city, but you can do a one-year tax exemption for a private developer if they'll do affordable housing. We were so excited because there's all those apartments going in on Lafayette Avenue. Great, we have more people to put, more places to put our vouchers. Only the one-bedrooms will qualify within our payment standards. None of our people will be able to afford the two bedrooms because of... We have payment standards that cap the amount that somebody can afford with their voucher, and they're already priced out of those two bedrooms there on those new apartments, and it's really a shame. And then again, the bill for inclusionary zoning, I'm sure you've heard about this, is working its way through right now. The state level, right now, you can't have an inclusionary zoning, but once it's approved by the state, that might be something that if a private developer were to come in and say, "I'm doing a hundred and twenty units," you can, as a city, require that a percentage of those are low-income, for low-income folks. That is something that you can consider as well. So these are just all ideas and possible solutions. And then where do we go from here? So I gave this a lot of thought, and I thought, you know, the first thing that I think we can look at is things that can be done quickly at no cost, looking at the capacity of Gospel Rescue Mission. I mean, that, to me, is kind of a no-brainer. You know, if they've done everything they should have done within their conditional use permit, let's look at seeing if we can enlarge their program. Appropriate zoning for those currently homeless. If they can't be here, where can we have them? Because right now, everything I looked at within the city zoning code does not allow for any kind of tent city at all. I mean, so when you tell somebody like Co-op Ministries they need to go find appropriate zoning, as far as I know, and what I've confirmed with two planning folks, is that there is no zoning right now that allows for that. And so that is something I think that needs to be looked at. Maybe forming a housing task force, which would include city staff, housing developers, affordable housing organizations, and community members that are interested. You know, maybe we can take a field trip and look at some of these places that are doing this and talk with them. So we did that when we started the Community Connect event. We didn't just start from scratch. We went and looked at some other Community Connect events and talked to the folks, you know? How do you get funded? And how do you do this? And how do you do that? And they're like, you know, "Don't do this, and don't do that." And, okay, great. You know, we don't want to repeat people's mistakes if we can talk to them about those. And then develop some potential solutions and recommendations, and then bring it back to the city council. And so I would expect, if we weren't able to do a task force, that there would be, you know, one or two city councilors that might be on that committee, you know, so that you're aware of what's going on, what the conversations are, and can say, you know, "Absolutely, that is not going to fly." Or maybe that's something we can look at. So those are just some of my thoughts for tonight. Do you have any questions?
Let's start down with you, Al, and any questions?
A ton, yes. Very well done. Thank you for that, Lisa. I really liked your analogy of the family and the community, where the strong pick-up or support the weaker ones' situation they're in right now. I really like that analogy. I think it really ties in with our community. I think there's a lot of people that want to do something. So the task- So the task force sits well with me also, and of getting something started and get some traction going on this, because I know thousands of people who would like to help in this community.
Right.
So the question is, in my mind, how do we get started? What do we need to change as far as policymakers on the city council for the zoning ordinances? So a lot of good stuff. Thank you very much, really appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Remy?
Yeah, I echo that then. Thank you very much. And I, you know, had prepared some questions for you in advance, but they really were answered. And I would absolutely take you up. You said at the beginning that you'd be happy to send us this document. And oftentimes, regardless of what we're looking at, any presentation is already included in our packet. And this was a lot of information that was not already included in our packet. So I, and I'm sure that other councilors would very much like to have a copy of this. And then, is there, there was some interesting information in the pack of material in the Affordable Housing Toolkit, but some of that interesting information was in a color-coded chart that came in black and white. Is it, can we also get, or can you just give me directions to find that information on my own?
Yeah, I'll see if I can, I can find it in color. That's a good point.
Okay. And yeah, thank you very much. It was a great, it was great, thank you.
Sure. And I just, actually, it's my fault that it didn't get in your packet, because I was actually working on it up till the last minute, because I'm a perfectionist, and I'm like that.
It was refreshing.
But Martha does, I sent it to you today, right? Yeah. And so she does have that, that she can forward on to you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Scott?
Well, Lisa, again, from my perspective, the work that you put together in this presentation is so full and rich. And, you know, part of what we need to do is tell the story and talk about some of the solutions that may be out there. And I think parts of stories get out, and then there's miscommunication, and then you lose trust, and then there's finger pointing. And I think you have at least given us the true story of resources and kind of where we're at, that'll give us a groundwork then to study and then move forward. And I, as my fellow council members have said, we're to a point where we really need to bring the resources of this community together. Just to let you know, a number of us had an opportunity to go to the Gospel Rescue Mission just before our meeting today. So we spent a good 40 minutes out there, and we're, it's quite an eye-opening opportunity to go while they were eating, you know, and try and get around and look. And so I think the more we, the more efforts that we put and the more feet on the ground and seeing what's happening and not allowing all of the speculation and the finger pointing to go, because that gets us nowhere.
Right. I mean, and that's what you hear, we have a problem, we have a problem, we have a problem, okay? But, you know, what we need is, what can we do about it? What are our first steps? And let's, while we have the momentum, let's get moving forward.
So thank you.
You're welcome.
It's been very helpful and insightful.
You're welcome.
Kelly?
I really appreciate the helpful suggestions tonight, the on-point information. I guess the biggest question in my mind has been, you know, funding and things like that. I know back in the early 80s, there's been some emails back and forth, that there was a large amount of funding available to build certain low-income structures. And is there any funding like that out there now?
Well, most of the funding we get now is through Oregon Housing Community Services. So the program you're talking about, and she asked a very nice question to Doug Montgomery, and he sent it on to me, and I responded about, we used to have the public housing program. So part of the problem, and that was brought out in these Oregonian articles, was they had this big thing, we're going to build lots more of this low-income housing, and, you know, we're going to fight this homeless problem. The federal government in the 70s stopped. They just went, whoop, we're done, we're not funding this program anymore. And so what we were faced with, we had 70 scattered site units, duplexes and single-family units, and we were faced with these operating subsidies to run the program were declining rapidly. We were like six in the nation for decliners. And it's like, we cannot continue to manage this program. And so HUD gave us this opportunity, you can dispose of this program. And some of the bigger cities, they were actually demolishing the program, getting vouchers and then letting the people go elsewhere. Well, that's all fine and good, but, I mean, you know, we don't demolish our properties here, right? Because where are you going to rebuild that kind of thing? And so ours were in good shape, so we sold them. And the last 10, which just tickled me to death, we were able to get approval from HUD to sell the first 60 at fair market rent. So we did that, we got them out on the market, and there were investors, and there were, the first one actually was bought by a tenant that lived in the unit, which was wonderful. But the last 10, we were actually able to partition legally and physically. And so five duplexes, legally and physically partitioned them and sold them, we sold them for a dollar to a nonprofit arm. And then the nonprofit arm was able to sell them for low-income homeownership. So we sold them below fair market value, a lot of them were sold for like $94,000. And, you know, we checked income, so those were all sold to folks under 80% of median income. Wonderful first-time homeownership opportunity. But, yeah, the funding dried up, and that's where the city of Portland, like, we are so far behind the curve now, because there isn't this kind of money. You know, the city of Portland is way ahead of us, because their city has money. They have a Bureau of Housing up there that, you know, provides money for this kind of thing. We don't. I mean, you know, we don't get money from the city, we don't get money from the county, for the most part. We, if we want to build a project like we did in Newburgh, we took a percentage of our public housing proceeds, we took and we got tax credits from the state, we got a little bit of other money, and we put that all together, and we were able to develop this property, you know? But from start to finish, it took us almost four years. Of course, we went through rezoning, which was part of it, but, you know, it takes us three to four years from start to finish to develop a property. That was 56 units. You know, that's just, I mean, it's great property, it's beautiful property. I mean, we love the property, but that's just this part of it. And that's why I'm saying you have to somehow incentivize private developers to be able to come in. And again, it's a land issue, you know? I look all the time for land, and I think somebody was saying from the Housing Forum that I said I looked everywhere, I look everywhere, I like to, I want to build in McMinville, I really do. But there's no adequate land right now in McMinville for what we want to build. So that's going to be another thing that, even with private developers or for housing organizations, is having that adequate supply of land.
Could I ask another question? In regard to the tent cities or the small villages and things like that, where in places that do adopt these, where do they place them? Are they right within the city themselves, or are they slightly outside the city, or how do they work?
So I know-
Transportation is what strikes me as a key issue.
Right, 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 right. So I know in Portland, they moved the one out by the airport, so it's in a nice area, but it's out there, but it's, they have more transportation. I do not know where Opportunity Village is in Eugene, but that's a really good question. Is, I mean, you'd have to have it in proximity of transportation. I mean, you just have to. That's how our folks get fed and how they get to, you know, services.
Get to the soup kitchen or somewhere, you know?
Right. And that's the reason, I mean, they hang out downtown, is because they're within walking distance of things.
Right, understandable. I genuinely appreciate all the information you've provided. It's been very eye-opening.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your report, too. It was excellent.
Thank you.
I think just a couple of comments to close. Alan?
Oh, Alan, you have another question?
Just one more question. That kind of popped in my mind, too, in these villages that were shown. Were they in a municipality or were they in a county? And can that happen in county, on county property, such as a tent city or an opportunity city or these type of places? Can it happen on a-
Right. So again, I think it's something I would have to talk to county planning about. I found something in this state ordinances that allow for private campgrounds, which was as close as I could get to tent cities on property that's zoned agricultural or forest. So I think there's possibilities there, but again, it's citing places so that they're, the folks that are there can get to services. So again, it would be something as, you know, how far out are their city limits, and is there something that's in close proximity that we could find?
So it really probably won't-
You know, I guess just a couple of comments, Lisa, for close. And the first one is, is I think you brought up a couple very good things in your presentation, you know, our comprehensive plan and our goals, you know, the only time we normally hear about it, our goals as a council, because I mean, there's, the comp plan is a big plan, is when somebody brings something to us that says, you know, here's things you can do under your comp plan. It's like, I've been in city services for over 30 years now. Do I know our comp plan inside and out? Hate to tell you no, but I don't. But the points you brought about our housing goals and our comp plan, to me, is the mayor and the council, it makes a big difference in what is available, that authorities do we have in our comp plan now that allows us to look at other things. I think that was one of the biggest things. And then, not too long ago, I watched a special on television on what I think is one of the best new up-and-coming variations, is the tiny house cities. And you talked about Opportunity Village. Those, they're fairly, even with a rest, small restroom and a shower, they're fairly inexpensive to build. You can put a lot on a small, if you look at the density, you can put a lot of them on a small piece of property. I think, I'm not a big backer myself in the tent cities, but the, something like an Opportunity Village, I think has a lot in the future, has a lot, because for a very little investment, you could do a lot, lot of good. And so that kind of thing really, really interests me. And I think this is the first time I've seen, a long time, where the city, along with the housing authority and YCAP and the rescue mission, I think in the last couple of months, we've actually, since we took this as a goal, we've probably made more progress in the last three to four months than we've made in five years.
I absolutely agree, yeah.
But it's due, and I hope a year from now, we could be sitting here and looking at, we have zoning places, we have zoning changes in. I can think of several places that may be right now zoned light industrial, very close to transportation. They could be general commercial, that would be excellent for either like a tent city or a small city. But because of the way our comp plan is in our zoning laws, we can't do it. But yet our comp plan says, one of the gold six of our comp plan, says that's the things we should do. And so this kind of edutational process, I think for the whole council is very extremely helpful. And I want to be able to sit here a year from now and look at the progress we made from now to a year, and I think you can see a lot of, a lot of progress between people like you, and I know Howie, and I know how, when Mark used to be at the Housing Authority, how he was involved, and I was totally impressed by the Gospel Mission when we were over there that night. The only thing that didn't impress me, I was very impressed with the service they do, very impressed with what they provide, the facilities they had it provided in, to me as the mayor of McMinville and as a citizen, was very disappointing. Because it's a great program, but yet the facilities-
Yeah. And I think that you're going to find that, I mean, with all of our homeless-type facilities, is it's not impressive. Like, if you go down to Eugene, they have some impressive homeless facilities, they have some oppressive ex-offender facilities. We toured some of them, and it's just, it's completely impressive, you know? And, you know, I know Lori has said this before, but, you know, we can do better. We can do better here.
One that, today, it really tugged, because having three kids, they're all graduated now, graduated from college, but it really tugged at my heartstrings. Tonight, I told one of the councilors and our tour of the mission was, we were in the women and kids housing area, and there were, there was a double bed and a single bed. You could tell it was probably a couple children and their mother. But the one bed was made up so neat and had pictures on the pillow of her mother, her father, and her sister. And I'm thinking, with what they're, they have a place, they have a roof over their head, but just the fact that they had, how thankful that child must be.
Oh, yeah.
But yet, it was a shame that they really had to do that in a place that they really had. And that's the kind of thing that really, that got to, that really got to me.
Right.
Tonight. So I think we can do big things, and I expect we are going to do some really big things. So, thank you for your presentation, it was very-
Thank you, sorry to take so much of your time.
Okay, councilors, under new business, we have one more item under new business, and that was a letter approving the Chamber of Commerce sublease of office space. As everybody is aware on the council, that the city does own the building, own the house where the Chamber of Commerce is located at, and it's time for sublease and everything. So Martha, do you want to say anything about that, or do you want us to just act on it? Or Mike, as Mike is our real estate guru-
Oh, no, I mean, I didn't know if Nathan wanted to say something about it, or-
If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, you just wanted a home, right, someplace to stay, right? For your office, so. Is there any questions on our renewal for the chamber? If not, then I have signed the document. I don't think we need any kind of a motion or recommendation. So can by consensus, we should re-sign the lease with the chamber?
Actually, you want to, you want to just give them the authority to do a sublease?
Okay, we'll give them the authority to do something.
Do a sublease.
Do a sublease. So you have the authority to do a sublease?
Thank you.
Okay, so that being taken care of. Then we have one resolution, that's Resolution 2015-21, and that's authorizing the city to enter into a mutual aid and assistance agreement with the Oregon Water-Wastewater Agency Response Network, ORWRN. And Mike, are you going to take that, are you going to take that one?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and I'll refer you to the brief memo, mutual aid agreement and resolution that's in your packet. This is a housekeeping item, but I think it's an important housekeeping item and is consistent with the theme of Public Works Week that you issued a proclamation for earlier this evening. The Oregon Water-Wastewater Agency Response Network is a mutual aid network made up of 105 agencies throughout Oregon, water and wastewater agencies that have agreed to support each other in the case of an emergency or a natural disaster. This sort of mutual aid agreement's consistent with the city's emergency operation plan and is an important component for us to be prepared in the, in the event of a disaster or an emergency. So unless there are any questions, staff would recommend that you adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into that agreement, and it certainly would answer any questions you might have on that agreement.
Okay, council my right, any questions for Mike? Council lower to my left, any questions for Mike?
No, down here.
Hearing none, then we have Resolution 2015-21, it would authorize the city manager and the city to enter into a mutual aid and assistance agreement with the Oregon Water-Wastewater Agents, Agency Response Network known as ORWRN. So that entertain, I'll entertain a motion?
I so move.
So moved by Counsel Mankey, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Rudin, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show Resolution 2015-21 paths the council unanimously, those members present. That will take us to our advice and information items. And council, since we do have a budget meeting tomorrow night, unless somebody really has something important for our reports from councilors on committee and board assignments, and we do have a couple councilors gone, we will, we will go ahead and not cover our advice and information items tonight, other than what was in the packet. So do we have anybody who would like to bring up anything in their council assignments? Hearing none, Matt, do you have anything you'd like to share with us tonight?
Sorry, just real quickly, Rose and I met March 27th with Dave Nelson, our risk manager for public safety. We received a report back today, and I'll be happy to share with you that we received excellent marks, and we are what he would term a model agency. There's a couple things that we need to tweak, but overall, he said, job well done, so just passing that along.
Okay, thank you, Chief, thank you, Chief. Mike, anything else you have?
Just two quick items. You have in front of you your invitation to this year's Public Works Week barbecue, which is next Wednesday, a week from tomorrow, at Water and Light. Again, we'll, as we've done the past couple of years, we'll be having a joint barbecue with the staff from McMinville Water and Light. So certainly would encourage any councilors that are available- So, certainly would encourage any councilors that are available to come and join us. And then, if you're out and about poking around on the city's website, you'll find under the latest news, an update on the city's transportation bond work, and specifically some information about this summer's paving, which is the first bond work that you'll see happen. We're out to bid now on about four miles of the expected bond repaving work, which is about a quarter of that work. So, it's a pretty good update and some project maps on the city's website, if you're interested.
During the dinner meeting, Mike, we have one question, and Councilor Hill wanted to know if you were going to be doing the hot dogs this year?
No, I leave the chef duties to those that are far more capable, so you should be fine.
Understandable. Okay, Rose?
She should be fine.
Candace?
Nothing, thank you.
Martha?
Well, I know it's hard to believe, but there are exciting things that happen outside the city, outside this council chamber. And one of those things was, if you didn't know it, we had an individual on Mother's Day who was a mother herself, turned 106. And so, we had a great chance to get her two councilors out there to read a proclamation signed by the mayor. And I just want you to know, if you see Rose Randolph out there, she still lives in her own home. She grew up in the horse and buggy days, lived in the Cozine House, owned a furniture shop down where I believe Los Macahetes is right now, as I think was a member of the chamber there, Nathan, so got your connection on that. But just a great opportunity, and really appreciate Kelly and Alan having a chance to get out there on Mother's Day to make it a little bit more special for her.
Very good. Very good. I wanted to, I just want to know who that distinguished gentleman in the picture is. Is that your brother? Any relatives to you, Alan?
Yeah, he's much younger than me.
Okay, do we have anything else to come in front of the council? If not, meeting adjourned. Kelly?
It's really funny, we have my mom's, my sister has it now, but when my mom passed away, my sister took her old dining room.